Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Marcie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos, Meringa.
Here.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truist.
Here.
Vanderwall.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Ryan Wieland from Granville United Methodist Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. And we're going to follow that with the pledge of allegiance.
As you feel comfortable doing so, I'd invite you to join me in a word of prayer. Let us pray. God of grace, we thank you for this beautiful evening and for this beautiful day and this opportunity to gather together for conversation, for discussion. We pray for wisdom and discernment in this fall season as well. We pray for our teachers and administrators and students as well as they begin a new school year. We pray in this election season as well that we would be able to listen to one another in respectful dialogue, that we might move forward in unity. We pray, oh Lord, that you would bless this time of beating, that you would give us wisdom and grace for the challenges we face and help us be thankful for every gift. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thanks for being with us tonight. So you have before you the agenda. So city manager has suggested one change to that, and it's the thing that I was really looking forward to, and that was the police department civilian commendation for Zachary Woods. Zachary is not able to be with us tonight, so we're going to move that to a later meeting. So we're going to take that off. So with that change, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Support? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great. We also have the minutes from the August 26 meeting, which I was not at. So JR, thank you for chairing that meeting. And you have the amended minutes, just showing that I was not there and JR was. So had a chance to take a look at those. Any questions, comments? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve those minutes from August 26?
Support.
Support. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great. Presentation of the bills. Kind of a substantial amount. Stuff's happening.
Yes.
So anything you'd like to point out before we open it up for questions?
I'd be happy to.
About $700,000 tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, just shy of $700,000, another substantial amount, which is good news. It means things are continuing to happen. Got a few bills that I am happy to highlight as normal. I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can go into any others in more detail if you all would like. But we'll start with a bill in the amount of $33,150 from Aetna Supply. This is for water meters. This is a friendly reminder, the city is continuing to replace water meters citywide. So this has been a purchase that happens every few months over the last year or so as the city continues to replace water meters throughout the city. We'll move down to a bill in the amount of $197,000, almost $198,000 from Michigan, or excuse me, from Michigan CAT. This was for the front loader that was approved by the city council on July 8. We have a Michigan Municipal League Workers Comp Fund premium payment in the amount of This is one of four quarterly payments that is made throughout the year. We then have a bill that is just shy of $30,000 from Precision Concrete. This is for sidewalk replacement and repairs. Specifically want to highlight that this one was to remove various trip hazards on North Big Spring. If you drive by, you'll see where quite a few different pavement patches have been either repaired or ground down just to try to reduce the risk of trip and falls there. And then lastly, want to highlight purchase in the amount of $51,887 from Todd, Wenzel, Buick, and GM. This was the GMC Sierra 1500 that was approved for the Department of Public Works just at the last meeting on August 26. Other than that, it's a pretty even dispersment of the total amount, about 13.5% to the general fund, about 16.5% to the clean water fund, about 24% to the water fund, and 37.5% to motor pool. So other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but a pretty standard Rema bills for us this time.
Any questions for Griffin about any of the bills? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $693,199.27?
Support.
And support. Great. Any other comments, questions? Marcie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Chief Anglin, you're going to tell us about the cadet program.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I see the cadets outing about, so.
Well, they've wrapped up their season.
Yeah.
So just like to give you a quick summary of the cadets' activities. First of all, I'd like to start off with a quick historical view for those that are familiar with the program. Started in 2022 with a grant from the Weller Family Foundation. The initial grant paid for bicycles, all the bicycle equipment, uniforms, medical screening, and the cadets' wages for the first year. That allowed us to test the concept, no risk to the city and no cost to the city, and it proved to be a very good thing. Those are the five young individuals that have worked for us as a cadet, going left or right, at least as I'm looking at it. Cadet Davis, she went on from us. She was a high school senior when she started with us, went on to Grand Valley, worked out there as a cadet for Grand Valley University PD. Cadet Jocelyn went from us to the city of Wyoming as a cadet. Wyoming's program is year-round, and she needed additional funding for school. Then she went from Wyoming's program to Grand Rapids. She went on to Grand Rapids Community College for her education, and she is currently pursuing a sponsored position with the city of Grand Rapids. Cadet Hopeman worked for us last summer. She went to Grand Rapids Community College Police Academy and was subsequently hired by the city of Grand Rapids PD when she graduated from the academy. And then what most of the night's going to be about is Cadet Kipers and Cadet Jacobus are recent hires, are our most recent cadets. Cadet Kipers was a high school senior. He is on his freshman year of college out of state. He is running track in cross country at the collegiate level. He has expressed a sincere desire to return to this program again next year, and we're very happy about that. Cadet Jacobus is currently a senior at Grand Valley State University in the criminal justice program, and he hopes to, at the end of his college career, to find a paid or sponsored recruit position with an agency in western Michigan, preferably us. And we're kind of hoping that as well. One thing I'd like to point out about Cadet Jacobus, because he is remaining local, and he saw the press we got on our police officers film there for crossing guards. Cadet Jacobus, when he found out the need, he actually applied, and is one of our substitute crossing guards now. The goals for the program, you know, when we started it, we wanted to, one, increase our recruiting efforts with, especially this last year, with the two expressing sincere desires to come back to work for Granville PD either as a return cadet or as a police officer. We've met that. We wanted to increase our departments in the city's visibility amongst our parks and trail systems. And we wanted to have appropriate staffing levels for all of our summer engagement programs because with our staffing over the past couple summers, we were running it pretty thin with just myself, the deputy chief, and our school officers. Some of the events that they've attended this year, obviously the Fourth of July Parade Carnival and fireworks, that was huge. Just want to throw a quick pitch in for them and amend it, the Fourth of July coordinator, the only employees that don't get any compensation for working on a holiday other than straight wages, so I'm really hoping that that can get adjusted for next year. Comms cops and cadets is always a fun way to introduce them to the community. Farmers Market, we were out there several times, and when we weren't set up at a table, they always made sure to step in each time that that was up and running. One thing that our cadets actually found and made all the connections with was Grand Rapids Public Schools Summer Rot Program. They saw the kids out playing, talked to the teachers, and actually worked into their programming as it fit with their schedules. Set up a gun lock giveaway in the farmers market and, you know, National Night Out, music, food, and fun. These cadets actually worked on Friday nights to make sure that we had a presence during the summer music series. And obviously, Police in the Parks, we could never have done it without them. They developed their own fan base because they can run play tag a lot better than us all get to do this year. Some of the statistical impact that they had, that photo is from our last Police in the Parks at Wedgewood. We worked a little over 600 hours, did over 400 trail patrols, over 1,100 park visits, just under 2,000 miles of bike patrol. We are going to have a little increase in maintenance because we got to buy some tires for next season, but it's good. And they interacted with almost 4,500 individuals over the summer. So, I mean, that is pretty impressive. Some of the things that aren't included in those statistical numbers, these guys were very sharp. They listened to the radio, they heard Wyoming put out a broadcast for subjects wanted in a domestic violence case. Our cadet saw it, called it in appropriately, didn't, you know, go all Rambo and just called in, and we were able to find that vehicle and get Wyoming out to it, where Wyoming was able to make the arrest for domestic violence. Equally as important, and what kind of flips into the trail patrols, they ran across an individual that was experiencing a medical emergency and were able to guide and direct fire and EMS out to that subject's location. And if they hadn't been out on the trails, subject didn't have a cell phone, and was not in any condition to call for medical help on his own. So again, there are a lot of things that this program gives our community that aren't quantifiable numbers. Just shows you where they spent their time. Every place, with the exception of the Lowly Complex, got at least 100 visits over the summer. I think that's pretty impressive. These cadets didn't spend as much time on target in each one of the parks, but from the comments we got from the citizens, you know, they're kind of like savvily wherever they were everywhere. I realize a lot of people in here are too young to get that reference, but that's okay. The way their time broke down, you know, about a third of it was on trails, majority of their time was spent in our park system, which is what we really wanted. And we also spent a decent amount of time in the coven supporting the other city events. This one is pretty telling. Normally, you compare programs year to year. Last year, we were only able to recruit and hire a single cadet. So when I did the statistical analysis, I take it back to 2022. So it's two employees versus two employees, and our cadets are really active over the park this year. Just everything had massive increases in their productivity. I think one of the reasons behind that is we had a slight mix in age with a little more mature candidate being a college student. I think that just really helped us out. And then with that being a good base, if we can get Peter to come back and apply for next year, I think that we'll see similar increases again. And they are both currently recruiting for us for next year, so we are looking forward to that. Again, just wanted to take a few minutes because I do feel that our two cadets did an outstanding job and wanted to let you know some of their accomplishments, and we will answer any questions on the program. If you're wondering how much it costs, you got all that for under $10,000 this season, so.
What a great program. Thanks for the presentation. Any chance we could have three or four cadets?
We'll pack for the budget first.
Okay. Jane?
That's nice.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you. Next item presentation is Michigan Municipal League, the Community Excellence Award video. Teresa, do you want to introduce this or talk about it or not?
We put Teresa's name on there just to give her a little bit of credit. She's worked really hard on coordinating the, both the production of the video with the assistance of the professional that city council held higher, but I think we just have it where we can pull it up on the screen.
That'd be great.
Go from there.
You would not believe what this beautiful space used to look like. This was a parking lot that the buses used to come into, and they would idle and they would wait for passengers. And now it is this beautiful garden, musical garden. So yeah, the transformation has just been amazing.
When we started events down here, there was nothing. So we started by creating the events in a parking lot on the street skate. So probably from 10 years ago, saw that there was a need and a potential to add something here. It accomplishing what the goals were in bringing people down here and building that community, that gathering space, a sense of pride in our downtown and what it has to offer.
So Granville was looking for a connection, a pedestrian connection between downtown and the library. Currently, at the time, it was a large, open asphalt parking lot, not necessarily safe for pedestrians to make that connection, to make that walk through, and they wanted to make it safer, but they also wanted to create a place that they could hold events and do different things to kind of create a more vibrant downtown. And so we were brought together as a team to help that happen.
This project is in two parts. It's the commons addition to the library as well as the private project filling. The pavilion was first established the need in the 2004 Downtown Master Plan. The library expansion, we realized we needed that in 2008, space and study that recognized that libraries were a little longer just for books, but also required ample multi-use spaces for all libraries. The project is unique because the number of parties that had to come together to construct it. First, we need the city of Granville to support the Downtown Development Authority, the Kent District Library, and also the Granville community.
My goal as Downtown Development Director is to revitalize the downtown with mixed use, with residential, with more retail and restaurants. All of it's interconnected. If you're going to try to attract a developer and get that mixed use, then you want people to live in your downtown, you have to have places for them to gather and hang out.
Basic and gradient, so beyond our ability to use it for all of our stuff, we collaborate with the city on all sorts of things. So the space is often in use, the city uses it for citizens, police academy, assessors' meetings, clerk trainings, all sorts of stuff like that. It's a whole in place, so just a few days to build people here and load it. And then we collaborate with the area, all the big city events, and it's often used either for part of that or for volunteers or staging area or anything happening outside.
We are most proud of the fact that it is so heavily used. Nothing's worse than designing and building a space and no one uses it, and it sits empty and becomes a blanked community here. That hasn't happened. It is heavily used, daytime, nighttime, weekends, people use it. I've met people from outside of Granville who know about it, who have heard about it, who have seen it. And so for, you know, knowing people outside of the community who have been there, that's great. It's doing what it's supposed to be doing.
I love everything about it. It builds community, and that's what it's really all about.
So my hopes for the future, I have so many, that when you look at this space down here, if you walk around, there's so many little pockets and places where we can still do placemaking down here. I think any place where you add whimsy, where you add something that gets to the heart of a child, any place where children can safely hang out and parents can sit, just elevates the space. We have an entire structure behind you that's under new ownership and is ripe for revitalization. The downtown as a whole, I'm looking for mixed use and developers and downtown residential and more restaurants, more boutiques, and just a place where Granville is proud to come and hang out on a Friday evening, a Saturday evening, a farm market on Tuesdays, just continually define those pockets for a color and whimsy.
Our goal for the future of the space is to make sure space flexible and that's enjoyable for people to use, whether they're coming down here for our downtown businesses or they're going to the library, continue to host our many events in this space and to help that people continue to enjoy it.
Teresa, thank you for arranging for this video, and I don't know where you found the person who did it, but I think they did a great job.
That was Amanda's person.
Okay.
The one who did it in July. It was still great to work with.
It was really nice. Good drone footage. The only thing is, you cut out my eight notes from Beethoven's Symphony. Da, 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 da. I practiced, but okay.
I think this will help. Dash is going to open at the end of the convention, and JR is going to close, and this is in the middle, so I think it shows well.
Yeah.
What happened to the space, so.
Yeah, we trust you guys to do a great presentation.
We only have seven minutes, so as long as Dash doesn't blow the beginning.
Okay, and this was.
Five of the seven minutes, so one could go wrong in two minutes, right?
One minute, one minute, whatever. Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thanks for, um, partnering with the community.
Looks cool. I want to live in that place. Oh, we do. That's right. Good, thanks. Okay, we're down to public comment. Anybody here like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Don't everyone rush? Mitch? Yes?
I was waiting to see if I was not going to be first.
You are going to be first. Thank you.
Good evening. Mitch Leachman, 3963 Batfield Drive, and a member of the Cities and Environment Association with the NSYR tonight to talk up, to push, to promote, to encourage you all to attend the next event that the committee has planned. This is part of an effort that you all endorsed a year ago. You might recall, I came here actually at the end of August last year and asked that you all support the committee's desire to enroll the city in the National Wildlife Federation Community Wildlife Habitat. So that happened back then, and we are now in the process of working to certify the city as community wildlife habitat. So this event is part of that multi-year effort to get the city certified. So I don't know, I think you may have, Chris.
They do.
I have copies, just in case. So we wanted to do an outdoor education event. So we had a big event back in June. We used the farmer's market space for our expo and plant sale, and that was great, and we had a great time, and we felt it was very successful. But we really wanted to do something in the fall that really pushed families and kids, right? Really encouraged folks to get out and experience nature in Granville, experience wildlife, right? Experience the nature that we already have in the city, and of course, utilize one of our parks for that. So just a week from this coming Saturday, on the 21st, at Wedgewood, in the morning from 9:00 to noon, we have what we're calling Buck Creek EcoQuest. We've got amazing partners in Algro. You all are, I know, quite familiar with Algro. Wimiac, the Western, West Michigan Environmental Action Council, friends of Buck Creek, of course. And of course, we'll have volunteers also working the event. But a variety of activities, really, again, targeted for families and kids, for them to get out and experience nature. We'll have a scavenger hunt that a couple of our folks are designing. We're looking forward to that. Tried to push the developers of the scavenger hunt to have after dark scavenger hunt as well for adults, but I don't think we're going to go that way. That probably would require additional approvals as well. But watershed activities, we'll have some staff from one of our partners leading macro and bird group collection. That's the $10 word for what I call critter collecting. So actually getting folks in the water and showing them the critters that inhabit the creek. And also, I don't want to forget another key partner. We will have free or discounted coffee. I'm not sure which, but Littlefoot Coffee Roasters up on Broadway is an amazing partner for us and with their also the expo. And so we're thrilled that they're participating also. I don't know, I'll look to JR, I don't know if there's anything else missing, but I just wanted to, again, give a big push for the event. Anything else coming along?
No, just thanks to the council for agreeing to push through the funding for the John Bull Zoo guests, so that's fantastic.
Currently under your leadership.
Well, we were here for 36 minutes last, two weeks ago, so.
I think, yes, thank you very much.
Who's counting?
So yeah, and that is the one thing I did not shout out and should have. That money, those funds, the $300 that you approved at the last meeting was instrumental for us to secure the services of animal ambassadors, in this case, from the Landford Nature Center. So that, again, will hopefully be a very good way of engaging with the public, especially in the market.
I've got a question about the National Wildlife Federation. You were here last year, and I went online and filled out the form and got my certificate. How does the, how does the city, I mean, a certain number of people have to?
Yeah, so it is a multi-year effort because we are popping along very well with a lot of our points and a lot of our criteria with our basic plant projects, with the expo, with this event, speaker series, and at the Landford this spring. But another key piece for us to be certified is having a collection of properties across the city that are certified as individual habitats, just like your house.
Yeah.
And we need an accumulation of 200 points for all those properties. Individual residences are just one point. So that will take many years.
So are you going to have some information at this event?
Absolutely.
So we can point people to this and, okay, cool.
We'll have our ESC table, Sustainability Committee table, and we will be highlighting the habitat certification, absolutely. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? Just come on up. Last call? Nobody? Next item is zoning ordinance number 24-008. This is the childcare and daycare definitions. So I don't know, you want to give us some background or Matt or whoever?
I'm happy to.
Karen?
Thank you. Appreciate it. So just as a friendly reminder, this is going to be the second reading of the proposed zoning ordinance that's before you all this evening. So on August 7th, the Planning Commission voted to recommend a zoning ordinance amendment regarding the maximum capacity of home daycares in Granville. This amendment is to bring our local ordinance in compliance or to be consistent with state law, who recently had some changes. It was introduced and tabled by the city council on August 26th. The packet includes a redline version to show the proposed change as clearly as possible. And if there are questions or if there's some additional discussion that the council would like to have, we do have the city planner, Chris Corey, here this evening, who would be happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions for Chris or Griffin or Planning Commission? Is there a motion to remove this ordinance from the table?
So both.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 24-008, which is regarding some definitions about childcare and daycare? about childcare and daycare? Motion?
Support.
And support. Other comments or questions? Chris, anything you want to add?
So let me quick recover, it's pretty simple.
Yeah.
This is the system of state.
So we really don't have a choice about this, do we?
Yes.
This is just safer.
Yeah.
Being consistent is always better.
Yeah, okay, good. Any other comments, questions? No, we have motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
And Merrimas?
Yes. Next item is a consent agenda, so approval of this would be in the best interest of the city, because we do have a few purchases in there. So we have the police report, which is always good, always interesting, appreciate that, chief, from August, and the treasurer's report as well. We also have the minutes from the planning commission, August meeting, and a resolution 3353, Consumers Energy Standard, the street lighting camp contract for the Alderwood subdivision off from Ivan Rest. And then we have some purchase orders, fuel tank at the cemetery from the motor pool, and then the boat dock at Indian Mounds, as well as pedestrian crossing signals. I mean, that was a fairly big item, but quite a few locations. And then also lighting at the water tank. So before we open it up for questions or comments, or need for any clarification, is there a motion to approve a consent agenda, the best interest of the city?
Some of.
Support. Anything anybody wants to talk about, any of those particular items? Anything you want to add on any of them?
Just to highlight that the Consumers Energy Agreement's a little bit of a weird one. Some of you may remember that something very, very similar came before you all and was ultimately approved in January of 2023. Unfortunately, I was informed a little over a week ago that the form consumers originally had assigned was the wrong version. They have a million different forms, as you can imagine, so they sent us the correct one and graciously asked if we could have it re-approved. So that's the reason this is coming before you all again, but the city attorney hasn't had a chance to review it and we're comfortable moving forward if you all are.
Charlie, anything? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got a quick question for Charlie about the dock. I like the idea that you're combining that with the kayak launch. I talked about that at Park and Rec. And I like the idea that it sort of floats up and down with the changes in the water levels. Is that gonna stay in permanently, or is that something that needs to be taken out and put back in every year?
Yep.
You have any idea what the cost is to put that, take it in, put it out? Are we doing that, or are we hiring camper crews to do that?
We hired camper crews, dealers, $300, $400 for them to put it back, launch it and put it down.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about it being swept away by the river and the ice and everything else in the winter? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just a comment. Thanks for getting multiple bids on the water tank lighting. I mean, one, the low bid was less than half of the other bid, so yeah, thank you for getting a couple bids on that one. Tim?
For JR and Carolyn, that variance for daycare for 14 kids, is that something that we have already going on in some houses, or is this gonna be our first time?
Well, we had an applicant who, I'm not exactly sure which came first, but who wants to expand her current system, which is for the lower level, to the expanded upper level, and she contacted us to discuss it and discovered that our zone, zoning regulation was less than what the state was in wow. So that's why we put it in, so that we could change it, therefore she could make application for that increasing in daycare situation. She currently has it, it's just expanding it from what was six to what's now 14.
Any other questions about the consent agenda? We had motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
And Merrimas?
Yes. Griffin, city manager's report.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and get started with the first authorization, which is we have another fire station change order to bring before you all. I can see a little bit of smiling, I know we're all getting a little change order fatigue, but nevertheless, as you remember, these have been, you know, good things for us at the end of the day, and we want to make sure we're doing the project right. But nevertheless, we do have a representative from Nitterville, the engineer working with the city on this project, as well as the construction manager, and if it's okay with the council, I'm gonna go ahead and ask them to come up and introduce this most recent change order.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you for having us. I'm Luke Paco with Nitterville.
And I'm Aaron Ives of Dyk House Construction.
Welcome.
So I believe in your packet you should have change order six proposed. There's three particular items within that change order. The first is referred to as a brick flashing, price adder, and that is particularly where vertical faces of the wall interface with the roof's roof. The initial intent of the design was to remove a piece of flashing, essentially unlatch it from the existing roof and be able to slide the roof panels out. That was not able to be disengaged because of the ultimate fail of the flashing piece, and so the overlapping panels would bend. That would leave an eyesore as we saw the resulting flashing after the panels were removed. So we worked with Dyk House in order to detail the flashing to be able to fit underneath the existing, cut off the unsightly portion, avoid having to remove any more masonry on the elevations, which would be a very costly adder. So we have that as adder one, anything?
No, I think that's a pretty good explanation. We did, we did end up doing the brick removal on two of them, just because we thought there's issues in the area with the flashing, and determined that the flashing was in good shape behind there. So that's why we determined to not remove the brick in the other areas, which was a big cost savings.
The second item is what's referred to as the rim panels. These are ice dam renovation system, kind of like the wavy ice dam cables that you may see on the eaves, these are a little fancier for steel roofs. The original proposal from the supplier was based on known electrical conditions at that time, specific type of wiring and circuitry that was presumed to be within the firehouse. Upon the electrician beginning work, it was recognized that it's actually a different system that does not support as much expansion of a particular or a single circuit to cover full areas in the firehouse, which required instead of six areas to have independent temperature control, they needed eight areas to have independent temperature control, and each of those areas requires a controller module in order to regulate that temperature. So that adder actually is, there were two options that were presented by the supplier. The first matched the exact model that was initially purchased. We found out that that's on back order for 10 weeks, and is actually a more expensive model than what's required for this system right now. There's a more available option that was a couple thousand dollars less, that we're actually proposing to move forward with, still provides all the controls that we need, and any of the safety mechanisms that we need, and so that's the second rim panel addition. The third line item is good news. It's a deduct, which is always good to hear. I know Aaron doesn't like to hear that all the time, but there was originally a plan to insulate the perimeter masonry walls, provide some additional spraying insulation behind the drywall in various areas where staff is regularly stationed and where they're regularly working. The original construction drawings showed a particular wall thickness consistent with a two-by-four construction, which would allow spray foam to be, or fiberglass to be blown in. When we went into begin looking at the work, we realized that they actually used a different system, and they have about seven-eighths of an inch of space, and they ran the supports horizontally, so without removing all of the interior finishes, there's really no way to insulate. So that provides a net deduct to the overall contract value that's added as item three within that change order status.
And we have some faith that with changing up the windows that we are doing, that that will take care of a lot of the cold that was coming in, and think that maybe we won't need the wall insulation. It's something that if it does happen later, we do need, it's not anything different than what we would have to do now. So it's something that can be brought back up later in future discussion if they are still having issues later.
Any questions? That's the, that's the extent of it.
So the net change order is about $6,500, roughly?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Any questions? Council? If not, is there a motion to approve a change, a construction change order in the amount of $6,512.95?
Some of. Support?
Questions, support? Any other comments, questions?
Just questions?
Yeah.
Probably should ask this, but are we still within the realm of like the contingencies? And when we went to bid on this, you know, there's always a base price, and then, can we pass that?
So that is where this contract, my understanding, was a little bit unique from the beginning. That's actually a question I think I asked Chief May my very first week here, when we were starting to deal with some of these change orders, is where are we at with the contingencies? And my understanding is this contract was set up different, and instead of having a base amount with a 10 or a 15% contingency, this was a contract price at an approved number, so any change we have has been required to come back to you all. So my understanding is we're still within that kind of 10% range in terms of total changes when you look at the overall project. So, I mean, in effect, the answer to your question is, we're still kind of in a, in a very standard range, but this contract was just set up different for whatever reason.
Okay.
And I don't know, did you help with that contract set up at the beginning?
Just initial review.
Okay.
It wasn't necessarily about the format of the contract.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions? No, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Merrimas?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay while we have them here, just, we are gonna have them kind of start to brief you guys on one other thing that was discovered this morning, that there's at least a cha-
I know, I know. There's at least-
It's something that you guys can completely make a decision on whether you would like to move forward with or not. So the, the initial design called out for all of the lower windows to be replaced, that's what we're working on right now. The one, there's one area, and you can see it if you go outside, but there's one area inside of, not the brick, but inside of the flagstone, bump out, I guess, which would be the-
The north elevation of the hayroom.
The hayroom.
Faces, period.
But we did not, they were, it was not called out to replace the lower windows in that section, because there's upper windows directly above that area that weren't, weren't a potential concern, and so they left them, and that way you didn't have different colored windows. The new windows are a lot darker, because they're not faded, the old windows are heavy faded. So those areas were not replaced, not slated to be replaced. So that is something we're working on, they find the cost on, we don't know, so we don't want to spitball anything out there until we know what that looks like, but throwing out a couple of options if that, if you want to move down the road of replacing that area.
So we're looking at both the uppers with the lowers-
Yep.
-being replaced, so it'd be five total windows, the uppers are larger than the lowers, or just the two lowers. So we're looking at getting two different options. The upper bank of three windows aren't as weathered, they're not as dark, so it doesn't seem to be as much of an aesthetic difference, and they're still performing well, they didn't have any air issues that we were seeing in the lower elevation windows. So we are asking Dyk House to provide the right to move both the full bank of five windows, as well as the first elevation of two of those windows.
So our priority right now is to make sure we have windows that are functioning properly, because the last thing we want to do is go through this whole project and then find out we, we still have an issue. So just while they're here today, I wanted them to begin to brief you all on this, because unfortunately, depending on what is ultimately found in terms of the functionality of these, there's at least a chance that another purchase order comes before you all, and kind of my joke at the beginning, but also very seriously, you know, I think we're all getting a little bit of change order fatigue when it comes to this project, but nevertheless, we want to make sure at the end of the day it's completed correctly. So just wanted to at least give you a heads up that that was brought to our attention just first thing this morning.
And kind of right, no, we are almost completed. If everything goes good, we're, we're projected to be done by early October, and will be done, everything should be wrapped up, and hopefully everyone that drives by at least has a good feeling about the look of a non-leaking building with some fresh, I guess, paint, it's not the right way to put it, but some fresh paint on the outside, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next item, parking rec master plan update refresh. Matt, didn't we just do that?
It seems like-
Five years goes fast, right?
That's true, five years does go fast. Good evening, everyone. You have in front of you scope of work from kind of to update that robust parks planning effort that we did do in 2019, adopted just before February 1, 2020, which was at that time the deadline, to sort of last plan, and you sell your next plan in five, five years after that, December 1, 2025. At that point, you will no longer be eligible for MDNR grants if you do not update your plan. So you have in front of you scope of work to get it updated. This is not nearly as robust as previously, because we went through that robust process. What we need to do now is a few specific things. One is simply update the information, the data, of course, but more importantly than that, the work that you have done over the last five years, the parks upgrades, things like the commons, which isn't in there at all, so that needs to be added, et cetera. So we need to do that. Also importantly, the state requires us to do public engagement, if we do want to do an online survey, and it's going around pretty fast here, given the tight timeframe. We've already talked to, to, to Griffin and staff in general about ways that we can keep this under the budget that is stated here. I think we're throwing, it has a $10,000 cap on it, but McKenna is not necessarily going to end up having to use all of that. If we can be efficient, we work with staff and get it done, then we can hopefully come in under that budget for you. But we do need to work, as I said, quickly, because of the 30-day comment period and February 1 deadline, and it being closer to September, time is in its course. So we'll be meeting with the resume approval tonight, we'll meet with the Parks Committee over later this month, and then again in October, as we, as we look for us. So I'm here to take any questions.
I've got a quick question for you. I remember years ago when you first came to the city, I was impressed with your approach to public engagement. I think you, instead of having people come here, you went out. Kind of in a nutshell, what, what are you gonna do as far as public?
I can't do that this time.
Well, we don't have time, but how, what's your approach to public engagement?
So our approach this time around is to be online focused because of our limited amount of time, but then to hopefully get out into the community with, with sort of the marketing of that opportunity. So we'll, we'll talk to, we'll talk with staff, something like a mass mailing, use of the signage out in front here, use of some of our partner businesses, Teresa probably helped us with that, to get the word out that this is available, an opportunity. People like to engage on parks, right? Parks are fun, they're exciting, people will want to give their thoughts on that. And because of the tight timeframe, we're gonna want to make sure that you have blitz of, hey, city wants to do parks input, and get that out, so we're gonna be, turn that up really quick.
Yeah, Teresa's got an event coming up in like three weeks, so a lot of people are gonna be there.
Jager can help too.
Yep, that's great. Yeah, we'll be in touch with you guys, and similarly what we did before, we've got an event, we can pass out postcards, QR codes, stickers, things like that, something of that nature. Of course, you have to figure it out pretty quick, but we can do it.
October 3 and 4, is that the?
Four and five.
Four and five.
You can make your own scarecrow.
Yes. Is that a part of contention on the approval?
And actually, wouldn't be a bad idea, put the QR code right on the scarecrow, people are walking around, they could scan it and do it.
You can take our poll, so I don't have to make one myself. I hate to sign up. If you need another poll, there might be one available.
We can always find one for Chris.
EBW does a poll, usually maybe we could combine it with that one or something.
Any questions for Chris on this? Any questions for Chris on this? If not, is there a motion to approve entering into a contract with McKenna in the amount, to update the Park and Rec Master Plan in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars?
So?
Support.
Motion support, okay. Any other questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwall?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Norhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truust?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Thank you. Next item.
Yes, the last action item we have for you all this evening is an application from the Granville-Jennison Chamber of Commerce regarding a special liquor license application to have a beer garden at Fall Fest this fall, which was recently just mentioned to be October four and five. So a copy of their applications included in your packet. And I know we have some folks in the audience who would be happy to tell you a little bit more or answer any questions.
And this Heather's coming up. Randy, are you available to check IDs? Remember, we did that, we were quite good at that, actually. I'm going to be gone, but Randy will be.
Thank you for volunteering.
He has, he has experience.
He does?
Yeah.
So this year is pretty much same, same layout as last year. One change is I don't think Ambux is available to help us because they have their own bit of that the next weekend. So I discussed it with Teresa, and we decided that as the chamber's been a higher security guards for each entrance and exit, so that we have a paid person there making sure no one leaves with alcohol and because there might be a little shortage of volunteers, but. And volunteers have a tendency sometimes to wander away. They get sidetracked and see their neighbor, and so we are going to put one paid person at each entrance and exit this year to guarantee that there will be somebody there at all times.
Anything else you want to add to that?
I don't have anything to add, except we're excited to have the partnership with the chamber and have them involved in this event. It's exciting, only a couple of weeks away. As a friendly reminder, so the M L C C will ultimately review the application, but this one has been reviewed by the police chief, and it's just before you all for consideration.
And Chief, you don't have any concerns? I mean, it's always. So we recommend? What's that?
I said ID checkers are always helpful.
Even though you've got security, we still need?
Still need ID checkers.
All right, okay. So we're just recommending approval?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So is there a motion to recommend approval for the special license application of the Granville-Jennison Chamber of Commerce for October four and five?
So? Support?
Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Norhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truust?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
And then before I conclude the city manager's report, I just want to highlight we included quite a bit of supplemental information in this packet. Hopefully, it's a good thing. It means there's lots of, lots of exciting things happening in the community or going on that may be impacting the community, including the most recent newsletter, the flyer that was mentioned earlier, a notice about the road closure that started today for Thirty-Sixth Street. We're going to have a major water main project starting, should be wrapped up by the middle of November. Press release on the acquisition of the Rivertown Crossings Mall by a new development team, as well as a few other miscellaneous pieces of information. I'm happy to discuss more and see any other questions, but I'll just leave it there for this evening.
Okay?
Thank you.
Councilmember comments? Randy, let's start with you tonight.
Just want to say thanks for the great presentation. It's nice to see a cadet program like that, that there are younger people who are interested in pursuing law enforcement, so that, that's great. And it's a huge benefit to our community. I just had one question, I was reading the report, and you responded to fifty-eight alarms. Are most of those just false alarms or dead ends or?
Most of them are inadvertent or accidental tragedies.
Still need to be there, though, huh? Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, I thought it was a great report, too, very thorough. And that's just excellent that Cadet Jacobus is staying on as a crossing guard, so it's really nice to see that. Hopefully, we can get those guys back in some capacity, so that was great. Just want to say thanks again to Teresa for working with Nate on the video and putting that together. Hope you liked it. We're looking forward to presenting it on Wednesday afternoon up on the island, so a few of us will be going up there, looking forward to it. Had a chance to be on the Live with the League. I don't know if it's a podcast, it's kind of a, like a once, twice a month noon live Zoom meeting, basically with the league. So the four of us that were, had projects, were able to kind of pitch our project today a little bit with the, with the other contestants, so it should be fun. Teresa's been putting work into putting together a table and coming up with some ideas for us for giveaways and things like that. So I just want to acknowledge the work you put into that again. Looking forward to the next couple of days up on the island. I also thought it was great to see the, the press release about the, the new acquisition of the mall. I don't know about you guys, but I've seen a lot of comments on social media lately, and, you know, the mall has looked pretty rough for a while. The previous owners really have let it deteriorate significantly over the last couple of years, you know, from the landscaping to the parking lot. We heard a little bit about that from the gentleman who was here earlier that had purchased the former Yockers store a while back about how some of the, some of the challenges with the previous owner. So I hope this is good news and that Pogue will put some investment into the property and really do some neat things there. It sounds like they have a good track record and some experience with revitalizing malls, and it sounds like they already have some ideas of different things that we can do to. It's just such an important component of our community, you know, not just the tax base, but our commercial corridor through there. And, you know, it's a destination for a lot of people to come to town, and it gives people an impression of Granville, the way it's kept up and the way it looks. So looking forward to that, I hope that that will be good news.
All right, I wholeheartedly concur with the statements about the cadet program, this wonderful presentation and wonderful job by our two cadets, and thankful to the Weller Foundation for giving the initial investment there to allow us to test that and see that it would be successful. So very grateful for that. I also, tonight was the first night that I saw the video, and I was just very impressed. I want to commend everyone who was involved. The people who spoke did a phenomenal job. The quality of the video was exceptional. Some of the shots with the drone, I just thought that was really professional. So if we don't win, it's because Josh and Jared didn't do their job. I wish you both a best, but that was, really, it was excellent. I'm also very excited that the, about Thirty-Sixth Street, I'm not excited about the construction part, but I am excited that it's getting so much needed love because it is a path that I often take, and it's kind of the Wild West over there. That road is in need of some, some considerable improvements. So I was very happy to see that.
I concur with everything said, and it's good to see you here tonight, Matt. Glad you're back on the job and hope you're feeling well.
I am, thank you, Jeff, considering everything on the boundary is just a good PC these days.
Good to see you. That's it.
I was also going to note the presence of our assistant city manager to join us, rejoined us for the first time in quite some time. Other than that, I had nothing to add to what's been said, thanks.
Yeah, everything's already been said. Looking forward to an awesome conference on the island. I think it's been eight years since they've hosted because four years ago was something else happening in this world. So for some of us, it'll be the first time attending that conference on the island, so looking forward to it.
Great. The problem with going last, as everybody said, everything I was thinking, but I do have one other comment. So I come into City Hall once in a while, and I just see how much work Marcy is doing on the election already, so thank you for all your hard work. If anybody's watching or listening tonight and has any questions about elections,